Dr. Yarne.
Here.
Mrs. Kildare, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. I just want to announce that Mrs. Kildare is participating via phone this evening. We just wanted to make sure that she could hear us. So if at any time you need to ring in, just when there's a pause, just say my name, or you can go ahead and text me and we'll do that.
Okay.
Madam President, with your permission, I'd like to make a statement prior to the meeting.
Sure.
Thank you. At our last board meeting, there were multiple questions regarding the selection of an engineering firm for the school district. I would like to take some time to highlight the process we followed and to answer the questions that were asked. When I was hired, I informed the board that I believed that all contracts should be revisited and evaluated on a regular basis to be sure that the district's services are competitive. It is my recommendation that, it was my recommendation that we do that for an engineering services since these services have not been evaluated in an extended period of time. This was in no way an indication of our current engineering firm and that they were performing poorly. It was simply an opportunity to make sure that we have the best services possible for Penridge. Engineering services are considered a professional service under the Pennsylvania School Code and need not be bid. This means there are no set timeframes for reevaluation and no prescribed process required to select a vendor. This is because the selection of a professional service, unlike the selection of a commodity, is dependent on a host of different factors that cannot be simply reduced to comparing one single number. To begin the process, I asked Mr. Dalbert, our business administrator, and Mr. Kelly Harper, our director of operations, to develop a request for proposal, or RFP, for our engineering services. They evaluated the district needs and solicited RFP samples from other school districts. The RFP they delivered was posted, and six different engineering or architectural firms responded with proposals. Mr. Dalbert, Mr. Kelly, and myself first evaluated the six proposals based on various criteria that we had developed. That criteria consisted of the firm's understanding of the work required, their history of previously similar work completed, the background of their employees to make sure that they have the ability to perform the various needs of the district, and of course, multiple financial data. We provided a summary chart that analyzed the information submitted as well as the complete proposals for board review. That information was presented and discussed during a public committee meeting on April 9th. Based on the information presented, the board decided to invite five of the six firms to make presentations and respond to interview questions. In preparation for those interviews, I asked Mr. Dalbert and Mr. Harper to develop questions for each of the major criteria that we had used in the RFP. I shared those questions with the full board and asked them to add any topics or questions that they would like to include during interviews. Before the interviews, the board and myself prioritized those questions into a final list that were then asked of all firms during the presentations that took place on June 11th and 12th. At the conclusion of those interviews, everyone was asked to submit any questions or requests for additional information that they still needed to be able to make a decision. Additional information was sought from many of the five firms and other reference checks were completed. At a follow-up executive session on July 9th, the additional requested information and responses were shared with the board, including confidential feedback from references. This was an information gathering session at which the firm's proposals, including their confidential pricing strategies and their unique approaches to serving the district, were compiled. While there was never any deliberation regarding a selection, board members were asked if there was any additional information they needed to be able to make a decision. There were questions asked as to why these interviews were completed during an executive session and not during public meetings. The process is set up, is set up that way because much of what the firms are asked involved their confidential pricing strategies as well as their thoughts on future projects or confidential issues we may ask them. It would be unfair to allow other firms access to this information simply because they presented after another firm. Additionally, firms were asked to share personal reference information and to follow up on questions regarding any concerns that may have arisen in the past. This is consistent with other decisions made in the past by this school board, most recently for district solicitor and superintendent. As the facility chair, Mr. Kraus was responsible for making the motion in this matter. Based on his analysis of all the information provided, he recommended Reynolds as our new engineering firm. The board, having had time to consider all information, selected Reynolds at a public meeting as required by the school code. The motion was not specific on the agenda because any firm could have been recommended and considered at that time. The specific contract with Reynolds is currently being reviewed by lawyers from both organizations and should be ready for discussion and a vote in September. I want to be clear that the administration designed the RFP, received, analyzed, and provided feedback on the proposals, and submitted questions for the interview. The board was given all of that information available to be able to make an informed decision and then conduct the interviews. This was a difficult decision as there were multiple firms that made very strong presentations. Ultimately, the board accepted Mr. Kraus's proposal to hire Reynolds as they believe it is the best fit for Penridge at this moment. I am confident that the board members seriously considered all information given to them and fairly followed the process. I am excited to begin our work with Reynolds, and we look for opportunities, and we will look for opportunities for this community to get to know them and their work on behalf of the Penridge School District in the upcoming months. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bolton. Next, we will move to public comment. The Penridge School Board welcomes public comment. According to Policy 903, we remind everyone of the following. Public comment shall be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the board. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and note their name and municipality. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer rather than to individual board members, district employees, or members of the public. A speaker may speak once during each comment period. Please note that these sessions are designated for comments. To protect the confidentiality and privacy rights of all members of our community, the board encourages members of the public to direct any comments regarding particular individuals such as students or district employees privately to the superintendent or other appropriate administrators or board members, or to communicate with the board and superintendent privately by sending an email to PSDSchoolBoard@Penridge.org. Questions raised and not addressed may be followed up at a later time, and we usually wait until the end of public comment to, to respond. First, on the list, we have Kyle Esposito, East Rock Hill Township.
Good evening. Roughly six months ago, I revealed to you a very personal story regarding the death of my close friend and the second meeting cause of death for ages thirteen, or fifteen to thirty-four: suicide. My hope was that this story would spur you to act on this urgent security threat and improve our school's mental health resources and awareness. Since then, to my knowledge, no action has been taken to address this crisis. Since then, our district has received updated PACE survey data indicating that this problem has only grown worse, with a three to four percent increase in attempts among our sixth grade students. Our district was even referenced in both the Daily Intelligencer and Bucks County Herald by Representative Wendy Thomas for our troubling statistics. This problem is not going away, and while action is not taken, our students will continue to suffer. So, do you acknowledge that this is a problem, and if so, what is your plan to address it? Thank you.
Diane Herring, Hilltown Township.
Good evening, Diane Herring, Hilltown Township. I'm speaking to the board this evening because I would hope that the board will make a public statement regarding several recent public social media posts regarding our district performance rankings. Three years ago, I stood before this board when Dr. Radkin advocated that NISH was the reference point for ranking. I indicated then, I put it in writing to the board at the time, that NISH's system is inherently flawed. It's also out of date. Currently, there are numerous posts circulating around this town that indicate that NISH is the be-all, end-all result for ranking. However, according to NISH's own information, they provide corrupt data. First off, they use educational data that is more than two years old when they determine the ranking. They do not disclose it. They simply say it is the current available data, according to the Department of Education. They also use this reference to surveys completed, and in some of their rankings that they attribute, they tie as much as 50% to the survey system. You can't actually find that survey on their website. I don't know where they keep it or who they send it to. What I can tell you is I filled out my own review of the district deliberately. That review has no quality control. It simply asked me who I was. I said I was a parent. Didn't ask me for a reference. Didn't ask me if I actually lived here. Didn't make me verify I lived here. Didn't make me verify how to stay in the district. I submitted a crappy review deliberately. It's on the website today as the most current review. I kept screenshots. I'm asking because people are concerned about our standards, and they should be. But the standards dictated by NISH are not the current standards. And it's clear we needed to make change, and every year, we stand here and Dr. Schei does it. For the last six years, I've watched her do it. It's either November or December, and she goes through every single test score, every single matrix. She documents everything. She goes back and reviews it. She lists out everything else. That's our current data, and parents need to be told that. Dr. Schei posts that information. This is very disingenuous. It's very concerning, and it's deep troubling, excuse me, deeply troubling that we have people in town who are advocating that NISH is the be-all, end-all.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Kevin Foster, Hilltown Township. Just to address too, I had one quick question, which is an easy one, but the NISH ratings too are actually what, we have family that were looking to pick a school district and move their family. When you put in, when you go on Google and you look for school district rankings, NISH is the number one result, first three results. So I get the previous commenter's concerns about the way the data is constructed on NISH. However, it doesn't discount it as a resource. It's been covered in the intel the last three years in a row. Additionally, superintendents and board presidents are quoted in those articles, so it does have relevance. My other question is, could we get an update on the progress of the support staff contract? It's been, you know, pretty quiet. We haven't really heard from the community perspective as to where we're making progress, we're getting closer. Where are we? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to briefly address a couple of the points that were made. Both Mr. Esposito and Mrs. Herring touched on two things that are very important to me, both as a superintendent but also as a person. One would be care for our students and their, and their well-being as well as our staff, as well as data. I'm a self-proclaimed math geek from way back, and so data is vital. It's also vital to know the importance of data and which numbers to evaluate and what their context is. So from a standpoint of student care, Mr. Esposito references the 2017 PACE survey, which the information does come out in the spring of 2018, and we have had that report and have made some decisions from a counseling standpoint. We are in the process of, and actually the board will hear in September, a presentation on a state mandated K-12 guidance plan, which actually embeds curricular items around student wellness as well as staff wellness in all of our grade levels, K through 12. And so it is something that is important to us in terms of wellness at all levels, not just suicide, but including suicide. And we do have places, we do have resources in place that are used for our students, but we are also looking to improve in that area. You'll hear more about that with the K-12 guidance plan. The NISH ratings are something that I am aware of. They have been out for a few years. I share many of the mathematical concerns that Mrs. Herring has in terms of their review and ability. For instance, they quote SAT scores and ACT scores, but they only quote them from people who submit them. They don't actually take publicly available averages, which are printed and are available. They, they only print the averages of the people who respond. And so we, according to NISH, had like 64 kids take the ACTs. Well, that's nowhere close. There's just 64 kids gave their ACT scores, and there's no way to know whether they actually gave accurate ACT scores. They, they submitted ACT scores and they were treated and they were used as an average from that standpoint. There is a lot of wonderful information on NISH about the district, right? So if you wanted to use the data to take both the good and the bad, it rates our teachers A pluses, which puts them in the top 1% according to their data. The district as a whole, although it was rated 101st in Pennsylvania, which is the data that got the play in the paper and caused some of the concerns, it was rated sixth in Bucks County in the top 20% of all NISH schools that were evaluated. And so there are both positives and negatives. I do, and we do, look at all kinds of data. That data report that's given in the, in the fall is comprehensive and is complete. We do look at things like school digger and NISH and those rankings. We don't chase them because their criteria does change and is often information that we can't in fact have any contact to because they are abused. There are people who are putting information in. I can tell you that one of the things that Dr. Robarchek, who you'll get to know a little more tonight, is bringing to the district is also a love of data. And actually, there is something that he's done in his past that we're going to incorporate that will make Penridge stronger in terms of our way to evaluate data, and that'll air rolled out when we actually have submitted data that we have for that standpoint. In terms of support staff, obviously both sides have, have agreed to continue to work. They have worked really, really hard, and we are making progress, but we, they are not public negotiations at this point, and so we, we are continuing on that path and are very confident that we'll be able to reach an agreement.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like, for the sake of the judge who is here this evening, I'd like to be able to take some of the agenda items out of order with your permission. So, Dr. Yarne, if it would be okay with you, I would ask that we could take the contracts for the two assistant superintendents that are under your committee. If we could act on those first, I would appreciate that so that we can move forward with the swearing-in process. Thank you.
That is fine. And we do have two that are specific to this issue. First, there is the approval of the Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education. So I move that we approve the contract for Dr. Kathleen Schei, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education for the term of July 1, 2019 through July 30, 2020.
We're all seconded. We're all seconded. It went down the line. I started. Okay. So moved by Dr. Yarne, seconded by Mrs. Walters. Questions or comments for board members?
I hear that I misspoke that it's July 30, or June 30 of 2020. I tried to do it twice.
Any other questions or comments for board members? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes nine zero. Eight. Oh, eight, sorry, we're misintended.
Second motion is to approve the Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education, the contract thereof. So I move to approve the contract with Dr. Anthony Robarchek, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education. This is for the term of August 5, 2019 through June 30, 2022.
Okay, moved by Dr. Yarne, seconded by Mrs. Dolan. Questions or comments for board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
First of all, congratulations. We are so fortunate to have both of them within the leadership team from that standpoint. So I want to thank at this point the Honorable Regina Armatej and ask her to come forward for the swearing-in ceremony. Any commissioned officers in the state of Pennsylvania need to be sworn in for their purpose. So we're going to start with Dr. Brewster Schei. And so if there are any family members here for Dr. Brewster Schei, if you please come on forward. Right, we're not doing this from the, from the stands. Come on up here and be part of this swearing-in. Everybody promises to be outside voice.
That is 14 with you. Very nice. Good evening, everyone. I'm Judge Regina Armatej. I'm here. It seems the new school year is about to begin. There's something exciting about that, and I'm sure it's even more exciting for you with this new position. Congratulations. Why don't I, um, who will be holding the Bible for you?
My daughter.
Your daughter. Hi, Kelly. What is your name?
Hi, I'm good. How are you? I'm Kelly.
Hi, Kelly. How are you? Can everyone hear me okay? If not, I don't need a microphone. I can turn it up. Okay. All right. If you want to raise your other hand, repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
Kathleen Brewster Schei.
Kathleen Brewster Schei.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education, correct?
Correct.
Congratulations.
Get in here, Jessica.
Oh, whoa.
Where's that?
Right here. Me. Cheese, one more. Do we do duffel?
Thank you.
Dr. Robarchek? And any family or friends for Dr. Robarchek? If you'd come forward, please.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
You got your backpack? You all ready for school?
Yes.
Anthony.
Hi, how are you?
You're in.
I am.
Dr. Anthony.
Yes.
Who will be holding the Bible? Emily. Aw, look at this. All right. So, if you want to put your hand on the Bible, and Emily's got it? Okay. Aye?
Aye.
Dr. Anthony Robarchek.
Dr. Anthony Robarchek.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education.
Cheese. Cheese, hi. One more. You got everybody looking? Good.
If this doesn't make you think back to school, nothing will, right? Congratulations to both of you.
Everyone, enjoy the rest of your summer. I think we need some more little kids at our house.
No more than the Robarchek household. We're good.
If you could just bring that backpack everywhere.
So next up is the president's report. On July 22, 2019, the Board of School Directors completed the annual performance evaluation of the superintendent, Dr. David Bolton. It was determined by the board that the superintendent successfully achieved the district's goals set forth by the board for the 2018-2019 school year, rating him as highly satisfactory to superior on all objective performance standards. These included student growth and achievement, organizational leadership, district operations and financial management, communication and community relations, human resource management, and professionalism. In his one year here so far, he has exceeded all expectations with his accomplishments, which, you know, many things that I think a lot of people have been looking to get accomplished in a long time, he sped through and, you know, tried to get them all done in one year. So since he's a numbers person, we're going to have a lot of, a lot of number examples in here for you. So when you talk about relationships, he had 193 classroom visits, 87 after-school and evening events. He had meetings with 19 community or evening events, he had meetings with 19 community organizations. That included promoting the relationship with the Bucks County Community College to expand dual enrollment and started providing, worked with Dr. Scheid to start providing credits for classes that are taken through the Bucks County Community College to help provide more opportunities and credit for students. For communication, he established a new Facebook page for the district. We already have 2,800 followers. He has Twitter, which follows, with followers up to, the Twitter has followers up 16%. Newsletter recipients are up 11%. He had the first annual Rams report, which was sent to all 21,053 properties in the district. And everyone, I hear from many people in the community, they think that we cloned him and sent out multiple Dr. Boltons to different events because they can't understand how they see him everywhere. For curriculum, he has worked with, again, Dr. Scheid and developed a planning template. The curriculum, he established, they established a curriculum design and innovation council with over 40 administrators and teachers. They developed K-12 reading, English Language Arts curriculum maps, which now makes it continuous from K to 12. They had habits of mind training for all staff, which is, which includes 16 trait habits of successful people, which then the professional staff is going to embed into the curriculum. He also looked to bring students back to Pen Ridge, and there was a 14.4% decrease in the number of students attending school outside of the Pen Ridge School District, which allowed Pen Ridge to have a larger impact on more kids and also saved us 200, about $200,000. Comprehensive, the comprehensive plan and K-12 guidance plan. The guidance plan is going to be proposed, I believe, next month. So that's going to be rolled out. But that has been developed and something that was worked on with the intermediate unit as well. And the comprehensive plan and these documents will help guide Pen Ridge over the next three to five years. The comprehensive plan is focused on teaching, learning, and innovation, effective use of technology, the well-being of students and staff, and college and career preparation. As far as the financial aspect, he brought us the first balanced budget in at least 20 years with no tax increase and no structural deficit with the help of Mr. Dolber as well. For the reorganization piece, it's going to have a significant impact on students and staff. Part of this reorganization included moving two supervisors to instructional coaches that can provide direct support to the classroom, four supervisors whose subject areas are now K to 12 to provide continuity in curriculum. The Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Director of Administration were converted to Assistant Superintendents for Elementary and Secondary Ed to provide direct support to each level. Additional aides for Cafeteria and Recess Duty were also added to provide collaboration, remediation, and enrichment time for teachers. All of this was to provide more hands-on support directly into the classrooms. He has solved a concern that many parents don't even know he's solved yet, but they're going to find out pretty shortly when they find out that there's some air conditioning in the elementary schools now, which was primarily due to his idea to be able to condition large spaces in every elementary school so that we could make sure that we have an impact on all of the schools at the same time across the district. He helped us accomplish kindergarten busing one way, which is also increasing the kindergarten day by 15 minutes, so adding additional instructional time, which, believe me, at that level is a big difference. As far as academic achievement, he established assessment data and a baseline for evaluation to evaluate and improve the Future Ready Index score. He's also stated many times that the third grade reading proficiency is often cited as a key data point to guarantee student academic success through high school. The, so he analyzed the data over the last three years, and that is a major point that he's working on to make sure that there's growth in that area. One specific initiative that is playing out in that area right now is our work on the elementary literacy program. And also, this will also include the addition of an elementary literacy instructional coach. One positive data point of the success of this program has been that Sellersville Elementary, for example, which is one of the main schools that has been rolling out this pilot, they have been at or near the bottom of the pack in terms of proficiency over the past two years, but during the 18-19 school year, their proficiency was 15 points above the district average and was top among all schools. Though one data point is difficult, you know, it's, you need a longer period of time to be able to get additional data points, and it's very encouraging to see that big of a jump and the motivation in the building for all of the staff who is, who loves the program and all of the students who are passionately engaged in this curriculum. As far as the, as far as working on the Future Ready Index, there were two instances where the Future Ready Index information was a primary focus. Each building principal received an individual training session from the IU on this data, and he is working with each of the principals to come up, to evaluate their data plan. So this is going to be a big focus for improving the academic achievement, as we've talked about. So there's been many significant changes in all of those areas, and we're excited to see, we're excited to see the data reflect that over the next several years of all of the major changes that are being made with Dr. Bolton and his cabinet and the administration and his principals, supervisors, counselors, teachers, you know, everybody has a piece in this. And with everybody working all together and his leadership, you know, the Board is extremely proud of the work that he has accomplished this year. And so we would just like to congratulate you on such a great evaluation because we're really proud of everything that you've accomplished.
Well, thank you. For the record, I asked her to say we're keeping him for another year. As a superintendent, you often are either get credit or blame for things that happen, but I want to be very, very clear that none of the things that Miss Baynes-Clemens spoke about have happened alone. We do have a wonderful school community here. The administration, the teachers, the support staff that work in this district are top-notch, and the work that goes on in the classroom that I will say anytime anybody asks me is the single most important thing we do as a school district, is amazing. And the teachers and the support staff that work directly on the frontline with our students are to get the credit for the vast majority of the things that were just mentioned. So I am honored to be working here, and I do love my job, but more importantly, I love the people that we get to do this with. So thank you for that, I do appreciate the work. As part of the superintendent's report, I'd like to start with a special recognition. And so for those of you who may not know, the Pennsylvania School Board Association, or PSBA, is the statewide organization that helps support school districts and specifically school boards on lots of areas. And so they're primarily responsible for school board training, for policy review, and there are lots of behind-the-scenes things that we rely on, PSBA. But tonight, I would like to welcome Ms. Karen Devine, who is the interim Director of Member Services for PSBA, because she has a special presentation that she would like to make tonight. So Ms. Devine, welcome.
Thank you, it's my great pleasure to be here tonight. It was wonderful to see all the exciting things happening in your district. And I thank you for your membership to PSBA and all you do as school board members. I brought a packet of information for each of you, so it has some of the latest things we're working on. And we are also working on some new publications that you'll be receiving shortly. We came up with a new School Board Secretaries Handbook. It's very good. We're working on a new Essentials of School Board Service Handbook. And then we're working on a book, it's, I think it's rolling out this week, A Year of Learning. So that's for school directors as well. It talks about all of our online learning opportunities and our live events, and in addition to that, customized workshops. So you can look at everything in one booklet. And just some of the things that are coming up. August 21st, I believe that is Wednesday night, if I'm correct, Centennial School District, we're going to be having a session there on Funding IDEA. And then August 28th, we have a webcast at noon for an hour on school safety. So, and you can register for that on our website. And then there is our conference, October 16th through the 18th. And on the 15th, we're having an Equity Summit. So please join us for that. Then finally, we have our new and advanced school director training taking place in the month of December and January. And in your kits, you'll see, I brought a piece on the school director training. And I attached my card, so if you have any questions at all, please feel free to give me a call or email me. Now, my primary purpose for being here tonight is to recognize a long-serving school board member. We call this the Honor Roll of School Board Service. And many of you know that the legacy of School Board Service actually began here in Pennsylvania. The Free Public Schools Act of 1834 marked the first statewide interest in a public school system. And it also created the first school boards. So it began here in Pennsylvania. And then in 1895, PSBA was created as the first school boards association in the nation to support the work of school boards. And in 1983, we started recognizing school directors for years of service. We started at eight years of service and every four years thereafter. And some of you may remember, we used to do this at our conference for the long-serving members, and then other times we would put certificates in the mail and they would be presented at a local board meeting. Over the past few years, we've been coming out and trying to present as many of these as we can, because it's certainly worth it to recognize you for all your hard work. Many people don't realize you are volunteers, you are not compensated for what you do. You're elected officials, and you put in more hours than you probably ever dreamed you would put into this position. And for that, we want to thank you. You do this unselfishly. You give your time because you care about the future of the children in your community. So tonight, I want to recognize Dr. Peter Yarnell for 28 years of service. Would you be able to come down? Okay, so how about we turn this around and tell us where you would like us to stand? Is this okay?
This is fine, sure, actually.
Okay.
Pretty wonderful.
Would you mind coming down here?
That's perfect.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, I thought it would be good to have Pen Ridge behind us. You want to stand in the middle, or, okay, here we go. Here we go. Thank you. Thank you, congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. Thanks for taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Ms. Devine, thank you so much for that. Dr. Yarnell, she swore me a secret seat, so I don't know how you like surprises or don't like surprises, but she said, "Don't tell them I'm coming." I said, "Okay, I'll keep it a secret." But I do want to add my appreciation. So in my transition to superintendent, you've been a valuable resource to me, both in terms of history, but also just in terms of the school board and the way that it operates. So I do really thank you for not just this special year of service, but all 28 years of service. We really appreciate all the hard work that you put in, and we have the school board and the children here. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And yes, I wasn't entirely surprised by the role of school board. My mother happened to be a school board member for 18 years in the Bellefontaine Area District. So I always tell people when they ask me, "It's in the genes." But it's been a pleasure to do it. Thank you very much.
So the only other part of my superintendent's report is a thank you to two departments specifically. First, Mr. Kelly Harper, who is the Director of Operations, was here earlier this evening, but is not here tonight, as well as Ms. Diane Miller, who is our Director of Technology in her department. They are the two departments primarily over the course of the summer who are working unbelievably hard to close up the previous year, to get ready for the following year, and to get our buildings and our technology devices in place and up and ready. So as you walk through our buildings, it is amazing the amount of work that they get done over the course of the year. I said in an earlier meeting that Ms. Miller's group not only has touched every computer in the district, but they've added about 1,100. And they're up and running, they're handing them out to kids, they're handing them out to teachers, they have the infrastructure in place. And so I just wanted to publicly thank both the Operations Department as well as the Technology Department for the work over the summer, because it really is, it's hard to realize that in the summer when we're off and doing vacations and not thinking as much about the day-to-day. So I just really wanted to publicly thank you, I appreciate you for your work. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Bolton. And next, we have a student, our student liaison report with our new student, Gina.
Hi, I'm Gina, Vice President of Student Council. So last Thursday, Student Council held their first meeting. Two new things we're doing this year is we got T-shirts for all the incoming freshmen that will be distributed on the first day of school. And we're also getting a guest speaker, Ed Garrity, to come to the high school. Some upcoming events we have is Gallery of the Arts. It will be September 5th, and it's a volunteer opportunity that we take every year. We also have our Pinkout football game, that will be October 4th, and we'll be selling T-shirts for $10. And last, we have Homecoming. So the theme this year for Homecoming is a tropical luau. And our parade will be held October 18th, and then the dance will be the following night on the 19th. So we're all very excited for the school year, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bellteggi, could I interview you for 48 seconds? Because I'd like the people to notice that you're going to be at many of these board meetings.
Yeah.
So can you tell everybody you're going to be in what grade?
I'm going to be a senior this year.
Okay. And what are your favorite classes?
I really like math and science.
That was the right answer.
Yeah.
I didn't even know she was going to say that. I just looked my chances. Right, Dr. Dor, how about it? Right? Anything but flat bucks will get you. You know, you're a loser. And Gina, are there other things you're involved in at Pen Ridge beyond Student Council?
Uh, yes, I'm on the cross-country team, I also play basketball, and I run track and field.
Awesome. What's your, what's your personal best in the 5K?
Uh, 24.
Wow.
Yeah.
Gina, we're really excited to have you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. And next, we have the Consent Calendar. I will make a motion to approve the Consent Calendar, Items A through H. Seconded by Mr. Rice, questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Okay, next, the committee, excuse me, are the committee reports, starting with the Finance Report? First is the Approval of Contracts, so I will make a motion to approve Contracts A through L. Oh, hold on a second. Oh, it doubled on the back page. Okay. Seconded by Mr. Kraus, questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next is the Approval of Insight Financial Services Resolution. I will make a motion to approve Insight Financial Services Lease Resolution for 2019 and Schedule of Assets for One-to-One Laptop Program, approved May 13th, 2019. Seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next, I'll make a motion to approve the Settlement Agreement for Student Identified as 2020-07. Next, I'll make a motion to approve the Settlement Agreement for Student Identified as 2020-07. Seconded by Mr. Kraus. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Next is the, next I'll make a motion to approve the Memorandum of Understanding between Pen Ridge School District and Pen Ridge Education Association, EDR Schedule for Additional Extra-Duty Responsibilities, July 1st, 2018 through July 30th, 2023. June 30th, 2023. Seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. I'll make a motion to approve E-Signature Resolution for Contracts with the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Seconded by Dr. Thompson. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Okay, the next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 10th, 2019. Next, we have the Facilities Committee. Mr. Kraus?
Thank you. The Facilities Committee did meet earlier this evening and on July 22nd. First item we have is obsolete items for review, Letters A through C.
Moved by Mr. Kraus, seconded by Mrs. Dolan. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0.
Thank you. Next item is Approval of, make a motion to accept and award School Bus Bid Number 20-110 in the amount of $804,145.
Moved by Mr. Kraus, seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or comments from board members? Okay, questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0.
All right, next item is a motion to deny the high school stadium betting system installation bid from Chromax Benz in the amount of $133,119.
Moved by Mr. Kraus, seconded by Dr. Thompson. Questions or comments from board members? I just want to add in here that when this was bid out, the price came back well over what was expected by the administration, and that's why this is being denied. And that's why you'll see that there's a separate motion to accept the, I guess it was through Postarms, right? For Keystone Sports. And so as you can see, that bid at $45,000 came in much lower. So that's why we're denying that first bid, and that's why we have that second bid there. Any other questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0.
Thank you. I have a motion to accept Keystone Sports Construction Polestopper System Proposal, Option C, in the amount of $45,942.60.
Moved by Mr. Kraus, seconded by Mrs. Walters. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 8-0.
Thank you. And the next Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 10th.
Thank you. And then we're going to move to Personnel down to Item C, since we moved A and B up to the beginning of the meeting. Dr. Yornell?
Thank you. Yes. The first motion remaining is that Item C, and that is a motion to approve the termination of Employee Number 9697.
Moved by Dr. Yornell, seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0.
Thank you. Second item is to approve Medical Sabbatical Leave for the first half of the 2019-2020 school year for Employee Number 5725.
Moved by Dr. Yornell, seconded by Mr. Kraus. Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. And next is the Upper Bucks County Technical School Report. Mrs. Dolan?
Thank you. The Upper Bucks County Technical School met last Thursday, August 15th. Some highlights from the meeting were certainly our enrollment as of August 5th was up to 765 students enrolled this year. Pen Ridge went from 273 students up to 313. Parent Night will be on 9/26. November 7th is open house, and everyone from the community is encouraged to attend. Come up, see all the shops, the new shops. At our last meeting, we approved Andy Wally Young as our new HVAC refrigeration and plumbing teacher. He is dual-certified, so the students will be able to choose if they want to have an HVAC or a plumbing pad. We approved Mr. William Garibard as our new Supervisor of Ground and as our new Supervisor of CTE, with his current technical education, Mr. Christopher Gentilezza. We had no change in lunch pricings from last year to this year. Our food truck is up and coming. Pardon me. So look for it soon within the community. I know it's already booked out for quite a few events. Some really exciting news, our healthcare instructor, Stacy Strump, was selected to present at the NAAP Job Analysis Meeting in Chicago. And our next meeting is going to be September 9, 19th at 7:00 PM. And everyone's welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dolan. Okay, old business. New business? Okay, then we're back to public comment. Questions? Any questions or comments?
I just have a comment. Should I come up to the...
Please come up and state the name of municipality.
Do I have to touch this? Helen Thompson, East Rockville Township. And I'd just like to say first that I speak for myself and not any other. I'm an employee of Pen Ridge School District. And I'd like to make comments on the jobs and conditions of the food service workers, some are job descriptions and some are not. We work on a regular basis with 140-degree water. 125 can cause burns in two minutes. One of us, I sit south, has to work for one whole week using water at 180 degrees under 400 PSI pressure. That's like working with a burning fire hose. We pick up boxes that weigh 40 to 60 pounds. You have a pack we put away. We lift trays that are two by three foot. And if you're a cook, most of us are women, we're in fact are all women. We're not the usual worker that was 40 years ago or 30 years ago, which were men, went to base school, where the pay was actually a living wage. And they have to be picked up with up to 25 pounds of food on them and sometimes put in ovens above our heads and taken out again. We ring up the purchases of school students while they joke, argue, behave, and misbehave. While we encourage them to act civil, thanking them and to encourage manners. Having to get the attention of lunchroom aides when things get out of hand because the lunchroom aides are usually out in the amongst the kids.